Call to order. Welcome to Lamore City Council Auditorium, 435 C Street. The month June, date 18th, year 2019. Please silence all electronic devices of courtesy of those in attendance. Thank you. We're going to have the invocation. While you stand, Pastor is going to come up and do the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With bowheads, Lord, we thank you and we praise you. We thank you, oh God, for allowing us to be here today. And, oh God, as we come here, gathered, oh God, we ask you, oh God, then let your will be done. Bless each and every participant, oh God. Let everything be civil, oh God. Oh God, as you would have it to be, oh God. And, oh God, we thank you in advance for all that shall be succeeded in upon, oh God. We thank you in advance for all, oh God, all the progress that shall take place. And we give you glory for this day. And every single day, oh God, you allow us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Ready? Salute.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being just as far.
Please be seated. Roll call. Ms. Vennegus.
Councilmember Blair. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Billingsley.
Here.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
The agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do we have any? Okay, moving on. Public comment. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wants to expound on anything that is not on this agenda? See, there's none. Going to ceremony and presentation, section one. There's no ceremony and presentations. Department and City Manager Report, section two, two dash one, Department and City Manager Report. Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Two updates tonight, starting with Frank Rivera.
Good evening, Mary. Members of the council. I just want to update you on a project the gas company's doing. They're replacing the gas line, gas main between the D and E Street alley from Lamore Avenue to Fox Street. So, part of their requirements is that they have to notify all residents. We're going to coordinate trash pickup. And they'll actually provide the city with a start date, so we have an idea of when it's starting. But anyway, the permit is from now until September.
Thank you.
What was the streets again? You said from Lamore Avenue?
Yeah, the alley between D and E Street, between Lamore Avenue and Fox Street.
And they're going to resurface?
They're going to replace the gas main.
But they're, the surface that's above that, they're going to replace that surface?
It is a, mostly it's going to be a bore project, but they will, they'll have-
Okay, they're going to line bore potholes.
They'll have bore pits, receiving pits, and then they'll patch back the-
Copy.
Right. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on down to consent calendar.
We have one more, one more director's report. Jason Glick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Just going to get an update of a special event coming up. It's the Firecracker 5K Run 3K Walk. That is Thursday, July 4th. That event takes place at City Park. The run starts at 7:30. And after the run, we're going to have a ceremony for the renaming of City Park to Veterans Park. We have a few guest speakers lined up. We're anticipating that event happening about 8:45 or 9:00 AM. So, we invite in the public, inviting you, council, to show up to this event. Park and Rec staff, they've been working pretty hard on this, along with American Legion Post 100. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, section three, consent calendar. Items will be considered to vote upon in one vote as one item unless the council member or a member of the public requests individual consideration. Three dash one, approved minutes regular meeting, June 4th, 2019. Three dash two, approved minutes special meeting, June 5th, 2019. Three dash three, second reading ordinance, 2019 slash O2 planning unit, developing number 2019 slash O1, to request wood side homes for a planning unit developing in existing Brisk Eastwood residence subdivision that would allow the minimum five-foot side yard setback for two-story homes instead of the standard 10-foot minimum side yard set former APM 023 slash 020 slash 010. Sequa determination, KETACOR exempt class five. Three dash four, approval award bid Hanford Ammonaroe Slurry Project. Three dash five, approval award bid CIP 5010 Summer 2019 Street Project. Can I get a motion or do you-
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I've got a motion by Mr. Billingsley and a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Consent calendar approved. Okay, going down to public hearings, section four. Four dash one, fiscal year 2019 slash 2020 budget adoption of resolution 2019 slash 19. Spear.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, we're here in order for council to adopt the budget resolution for fiscal year 2019, 2020. On June 5th, I was before you all with the draft of the proposed budget. So, I'm just going to go over a brief PowerPoint that kind of hits the highlights of what we discussed the last time. So, as we discussed, part of the budget is predicting where we think we're going to end in the current year. So, I've redone the calculations and it looks like we're going to have about just shy of 12 million in revenue for the current year and just over 13 and a half million in expenditures. So, we're predicting about a $1.6 million deficit for the current fiscal year. That will leave our general fund reserve balance at approximately 7.3 moving into next year. Keep in mind that the fiscal year doesn't close until June 30th, and then we have a 13th period window that we keep open. So, these numbers will change. They're just estimates, but they should be fairly accurate. So, going into next year, we have $11.3 million in revenues projected. We have about 14.7 million in expenditures. Of that, you have 9.1 in salaries and benefits, 4.7 in operating services and supplies, and another 490,000 in asset replacement. As you'll recall, at the last meeting, we discussed the capital improvement budget, which was over $1 million during the last draft presentation. Council recommended that we reduce that and only do the scope of work for dispatch that included building the building, but not allocating funds for fixtures, furniture, and equipment. So, we've made that adjustment. So, we've gone from over $1 million in capital projects to 447,000 for next year. So, let's talk a little bit briefly about what has led to the increase in expenditures, because I know the public and council has had questions. We talked last time about the increase in risk management insurance. As you'll see, in 2017, the city spent about $750,000 in general liability and workers' compensation insurance. For 2020, that estimate is 1.2 million. That's just, we are part of a pool. And so, those fees are established by the Central Valley Risk Management Association based on the number of claims that that particular risk management company or pool has experienced in previous years, and that's our portion. Salary and benefits, oh, and let me just mention, this is for all funds. This is across the board, not just general fund. Salary and benefits in 2017 for the city were approximately 9.5 million. For 2020, they're 12.9. So, when you see increases in expenditures, these are the two big items that led to that substantial increase. There were some questions at the last meeting about PERS unfunded liability. So, in that 9.1 million of salary and expenditures for, salary and benefits, excuse me, for the general fund departments, that includes our unfunded liability. So, the city builds these figures into our salary and benefits. But this graph demonstrates to you the difference between an employee that's under a classic program in PERS versus an employee that's under a PERS program since there was pension reform. So, each of these categories that you'll see are the four types of contracts that we currently have. There are miscellaneous employees, which is anybody that's non-safety, and then our safety employees. The bulk of our unfunded liability comes from our classic employees. So, in 2018, the city had about $555,000 in unfunded liability. In 2021, that is predicted to be $971,000. So, next year, we have included, this 853,000 is included in your salary and benefits. So, at the last meeting, we also discussed how we're going to project or report, I should say, our general fund reserve balance slightly different from the current fiscal year. The current fiscal year had your general fund broken up into three different categories. It was your reserve, your reserve asset replacements, and your reserve capital improvements. We made a decision as staff and council agreed at the last meeting that we're going to roll those up into one line item, because you can actually use those funds interchangeably. So, you don't, a general fund is for the use of any purpose. So, if we say we're going to start the year with the general fund reserve balances 7.3 and we're going to spend 14.76 next year, you're going to have a deficit of 3.4 million next year, and your general fund reserve balance will be approximately 4 million, 3.9 million. So, at the last meeting, we talked about how these numbers are very difficult and how we've gotten to this point. And we've talked about the risk management and it being unbudgeted, how revenues are not coming in where they were projected. So, I understand that this is not something that is nice and neat and something we want to adopt, but we have to adopt a budget by June 30th and other, in order to operate beginning July 1. There was a question last week, or on the 5th, excuse me, from a member of the public, and council agreed that they wanted to see our general fund reserve balance historically. So, going back to 2013, your general fund reserve balance was sitting at just over 12 million. You saw a slight increase in '14 and a slight increase in '15, and there have been steady dips since then. So, we've gone from 12.1 to 9 million at the beginning of this fiscal year. These numbers are coming from your audited financials. This next slide is just a recap of where our special and enterprise funds will be at the end of next fiscal year. Nothing much changed on these slides except some minor changes to the asset replacement requests. So, if you compared it to the draft that was given to you on Janu-, I'm sorry, June 5th, you would see that these values here in asset replacements have actually decreased because we went back to staff and said, "Let's talk about what you have and what we can possibly omit." So, these general, these reserve fund balances for these enterprise funds are slightly higher for water and for wastewater than they were before, and the refuse fund has pretty much stayed steady. So, let's talk briefly about the position allocation. We discussed this last time. We have a reduction of one police officer, a reduction of the fire prevention inspector because that individual was hired but since left the agency. We want to reclass it administrative assistant two that's currently assigned to fire and reclass that position into an assistant, admin assistant two, fire inspector, in order to combine those positions to save money within the general fund. The true addition in this particular budget is an addition of one public works inspector. That is because our public works director has been serving double duty since he was promoted two years ago. So, he serves as the head of the building inspections department as well as public works. He's the only employee that we currently have on staff that is certified and approved to do public works inspections. So, in order to relieve that duty from him, we're requesting a public works inspector next year. We're also requesting the transfer of one administrative assistant one from Parks and Recreation to Water and Wastewater. 50% of that individual's time will be paid out of each enterprise fund. And then, maintenance worker one, two. We're requesting the addition of two in the refuse department, as we discussed last time, because of the increased services that we're hoping to provide, the new subdivisions that are coming online next year, and our mandated compliance with AB 1826. So, long-term fiscal solutions, you know, a $3.4 million deficit is better than 4.1, which I brought to you last time, but it's still not great. So, we need to consider the potential of a half-cent public safety sales tax, which staff will hopefully bring to you in the coming months. We have the adoption of the cannabis ordinance, which is actually on the agenda for this evening for discussion. A potential increase for the transient occupancy tax that has been discussed within the community. And then, we need to assess the budget impacts of the Lamore Golf Course in the fleet department. And at the last meeting, I was given 90 days, so I'm thinking I'm down to like 77 today. So, in about 77 days, I'll bring those back to you. Then we have the development and implementation of the five-year capital improvement plan, which will help identify how much money in each of the fund's reserves we need to spend toward capital improvement. A revision of the city's cost allocation plan, which is how the general fund gets reimbursed for services provided to our enterprise accounts. And then, the completion and implementation of an asset replacement program, which the city does not currently have. There is one recommendation I would like to make that is not included in the slide or in the budget packet, and that is that after a review of our request for staff, when I came on June 5th, I asked for a full-time office assistant one, two for Parks and Recreation. And after discussing that with staff, we've decided that we can probably get by with a part-time employee. So, we, I would like to make the request of council to approve the resolution with one change, and that is to eliminate the full-time position in Parks and Rec and then allow us to increase part-time salaries by 15,000. That will save approximately $55,000 in the general fund compared to what you currently have reported to you tonight.
Are you on the, openness to the public? Okay, I'm a-
Ms. Spear, thanks again for doing a good job with this. I know it kind of fell on your lap there at the last minute, so-
No problem.
So, good job. My question is, the increased expenditures, there's obviously a pretty heavy trend there. Can we expect those to go, continue to go up into 2021, 2022, and should we prepare for that?
If you're talking about risk management and salaries and benefits, I would say yes. So, for risk management, we have seen a trend, you can see this, since 2017, that those costs are continuing to rise. And so, I think the city needs to prepare for that to continue. Unfunded liability, PERS is telling us that is absolutely the truth. So, you can see in the slide that we are projecting, you know, 971,000 versus 853 for 2020. That's a pretty substantial increase. As far as salaries and benefits are concerned, as you know, back in 2018, council adopted an 8% raise across the board as a way to try to accommodate the fact that we did a classification and compensation study, and the city could not get anywhere near allocating the appropriate salaries that the study had shown. So, that was the council's good faith effort to show that we were making an effort. I don't believe there's any proposals, we're not currently in negotiations to change any of those, but a large portion of your workforce still has room to move within the step increases. So, every year, you have a large portion of your employee population that is eligible for merit increases as they go through the year. So, you can anticipate approximately 3% to 5% increase in salary and benefits simply because of that fact. Then, if for any reason our health insurance premium increased and the council chose to take action and pay a certain portion of that as they did the last year, that would also increase your salary and benefits moving forward. So, that's the long answer to say yes.
Okay, thank you. That was the long answer.
It was.
Yeah, so, the dispatch center?
Yes.
How many, how many people do we think we're going to employ inside the dispatch center?
It's my understanding we're hoping to have approximately six to seven dispatchers. Chief, is that accurate?
When do we think we're going to be asking for those positions?
Well, we can't ask until we have a building, and we can't ask until it's equipped. So, my anticipation is not until at the earliest 2020, 2021, and that will depend on funding to complete the building.
All right.
And to staff it.
Yeah. I was just kind of, yeah. I know the crystal ball's cloudy right now, so that's all.
No, we do currently pay for dispatch services, and we pay for that to the city of Hanford, and that will cover a large portion of what it will cost us to fund salaries and benefits when we bring the employees onboard on our own, but we still have to find the money to equip the facility.
So, thank you for bringing that up, because that was my next question. So, what would be the difference?
I don't have that for you right now. I can tell you we pay approximately $475,000 a year right now, and our last projection was approximately 550 to 600,000 to employ them. But that changes over time, and our, our fees to the city of Hanford also go up incrementally. So, at the time that we request, I can't tell you what that is.
So, they're ballpark-ish?
They're ballpark-ish, yes.
Okay, that's all I got. And thank you, you did a good job too with all of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to say, at this time, speaking on my behalf, I'm not too satisfied with the budget. With the 5 million, is it, for the next two to three years? We're being the red?
Between the current year and next year, yes. It's approximately a $5 million deficit.
Is there any way that we can receive any funds to bring that down?
There's always a potential to receive more revenue than we project. So, for instance, next year, I'm projecting 11.3. So far this year, we've brought in about 12 million, so there's 700,000. My projections for revenues are incredibly conservative. The large bulk of our increased revenue for the current fiscal year has been driven by development. So, it's been for building permit fees, electrical permit fees, things of that nature. We also saw an increase in property tax revenue more than the county predicted at the time that we built the budget. So, there is the possibility that that will happen, and so your deficit for next year will be less than we anticipate. But I have received projections from the county for property taxes, and they're not projecting them to come in as high as they have this year, so I'm using the county's projections in my estimates.
Okay, I don't mean to ask all these questions. Any way you guys was thinking about this before we even got into this deficit of 5 million?
Yes.
Yes, so as we discussed at the last meeting, this isn't something that happened overnight.
Okay.
The budget that was adopted by council for the current fiscal year had several inherent flaws. The first was that revenues were over-projected by about $600,000. So, if you looked at this year's budget, you were told at the time you adopted it, we were going to have a deficit of 300,000. But that included the possibility of receiving 12.5 in revenues, which we're probably not going to hit this year. The other issue is that your expenditures were under-budgeted. So, the million-plus dollars that we've spent this year for risk management insurance were not included in this year's budget. So, the increase, how do I describe this? The increase for general fund only, year-over-year expenditures, we're anticipating ending somewhere around 13.7 for this year, and we're anticipating 14.7 for next year. So, we're going to call it a million-dollar increase in expenditures. That is largely salary and benefits, risk management, the increase in our fleet allocations, because our fleet allocations for the current year were not accurate. So, I can, I can account for almost every penny of that increase just in those services.
Okay, you, can you give us where the spend, where the spending has came to be that much? Did you guys overspend first? Have you guys overspent?
Compared to what?
Put us in this position.
Have we spent more money than you budgeted for this year? Yes, because the budget wasn't accurate. The increases were because risk management wasn't budgeted. That's a million dollars of the overspend is because that wasn't budgeted appropriately.
I don't know, I just, I would like to get a consensus from the council for a forensic audit to provide the recommendations going forward with our spending. The cost of the audit should be included with the budget. I also would also like to consent from the council to resume the budget committee to include council members and community members to aid in choosing. The forensic audit from ensuring recommendations are executed before we won't be in this position again. I don't want to put us, I don't want us to get in this position again, because we can't, we don't have the funds, we're 5 million in the red. I just, I just want to see what we can do before we won't get ourselves in this position again.
So, you're recommending an audit to go along with the approval of the budget?
Yeah, the audit, forensic audit.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
We just had audited financials that were just, they presented at the last meeting.
Yeah, but I'm looking for a forensic audit. You know what that is?
No, I do not.
Okay, that's where they're going to go back years and see what we did wrong, and they're going to bring everything out that we did wrong, and they're going to help us where we can get it back.
So, I know he's asking for council consensus, but just to add some detail, we do do an audit every year. The auditors were just here, I believe, in May, giving you the 2018 audit of our financials. And on June 5th, you guys also approved a contract with, they were our previous auditors, Price Page and Company, to come on as our financial consultants to do exactly what the mayor is asking from you now. So, as you'll recall, we discussed at the last meeting the fact that we have had some errors that have occurred in the past. We've had a changeover in staff and finance, and that we want to do our best to execute as many best practices as we possibly can to try to correct the situation. We had our first meeting with the financial consultant today. I think we're on a good track to actually executing practices that will help us overcome this. Like I said, these issues have been year-over-year problems that are now being identified. And as difficult as it is to adopt a budget with a $3.4 million deficit, which I completely understand, we are now in the position to try to correct and remedy some of those issues. I hope that helps.
It does. It really does, and I'm not trying to put you on blast. I'm just trying-
Oh, no, I know.
What I'm, what I'm looking at is when I have to go talk in public, when I have to go talk to some of my constituents, they say, "Where's, where's the 5 million at? What do you, can you show where this went and where this went?" And I want to have a word for a word. I want to have an answer to give them. So, that's why I brought that to you.
What was your, if I may, because I didn't understand everything you just said.
Okay, I was looking for-
No, no, if I may, no, if I, I have, just to have a question, if I may. You also asked for the finance committee, right?
Yeah, we, I don't know what happened with the finance, we used to have a budget committee, when you have a council, you have two council members and-
We do have a finance committee, and it only consists of two council members. And the council members that were selected when all of the committee members were selected back in January were councilmember Brown and councilmember Lyons, and they were included in the budget process. We met twice, I think, during the process.
Who else was included besides the council members?
Staff.
Staff, okay. Yourself and?
And our finance staff. Nathan was present, I was present.
But you're wanting some public people on that?
Yeah, I would like to get some public, I would like to see the public be involved in this.
So, can, can we add a couple?
I don't see why you couldn't in the future. So, if we don't adopt a budget by June 30th, then we can't operate come July 1.
No, I understand.
But if you wanted to do that in the future, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that would be, yeah, that-
So, we'd like to look into it though, I mean, we need to go into it smartly.
Okay.
And look into it if we're going to do it, we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to do it.
I'd be happy to.
Other municipalities and see how other municipalities do it instead of, you know, because there are some things that was brought up tonight about, you know, audits and stuff. Well, I think we're doing audits now. You know, forensic audit, okay. I don't know what forensic audit cost, and the thing is, the end result. What is, is the cost worth the gain? And I know we're upside down right now, but, you know, if we're going to do it, let's walk into it smartly. Let's walk into it gingerly and figure this thing out and grab it and take control of it, you know?
I'd be happy to come back with a study session and provide options.
And, you know, I, I, that's what, we'd come back with a study session, you know, I, I mean, and really look into this thing.
So, I'd also like to add that, for one, I think we've got the right team in place. This budget is probably the, it's the worst-case scenario you should see now and in the foreseeable future. We have corrected everything we could find. We're moving forward, and I do want to say from the standpoint, when the, when the increase was approved by a previous council, we, we did go on the record as saying we could support that for three to four years if everything else held pat, if we didn't get a sales tax increase or more economic development. And as people know, from the time somebody calls us to try to build here, it's probably three to four years to see revenues from that. We did come forth with a one-cent sales tax that never got off the starting blocks with the previous council. So, we saw this coming two years ago. We did act, and we did not, we didn't get a sales tax even on the initiative. So, we're behind the eight ball, but I'm confident that this is, so next year, there's not going to be any, oops, we're 1-7 in the hole. That will not happen. If it does, you guys, I'll quit, you all have to fire me. I'll leave.
Well, and let's-
Seriously, but we're not going to have that, oh whoops moment next year. It's not going to happen.
To the general fund alone, the salary and benefit increase from 2017, early 18, when the raise was adopted, to 2020 is $1.8 million of that deficit that you see.
So, I'm just asking this council too to work as a team, okay? And work with the people. We can get the people, get the staff, let's all work together as a team to fix this thing, you know?
I am committed to-
We point fingers, we're pointing three back at ourselves, okay? So, that's all I got to say about that.
I will be here quarterly giving you budget updates, which I don't think has happened I will be here quarterly giving you budget updates, which I don't think has happened in recent years. We will be instituting internal policies to try to help, you know, with the controls on these budgets. I mean, we will be doing everything in our power to ensure that what you see tonight is the worst possible case you see at the end of next fiscal year.
Absolutely. If I may, I'm just going to say this. I understand, I hope I'm not pointing fingers. I just want to be able to be held accountable to the public. We serve the public. And all I'm trying to say is I want everything to be legit the next couple of years that we can get, we're working together, and I understand what we're doing. I think we're going to work real good together. I just think that we need to make sure we don't fall into this again. That's all I'm saying.
Let's do it.
I agree.
Okay, now I'm going to open it up to the public. Any public comments? I see this, I see a smile.
See a couple smiles.
Okay. Well...
Must be the auditorium.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented with changes as the city, as this city manager provided.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for dash two, first reading ordinance, number 201903, for zoning text amendment, number 201901, and ordinance amending municipal code Title IV, Chapter 8, to allow and to regulate commercial cannabis operation, amending municipal code Title IX, Chapter 7, Section 9, Slash 4, 8, 5, to confirm certain land use definition of law, of the state law, amended municipal code Title IX, Chapter 4, Section 9, Slash 4B, Slash 2, to clarify municipal and add commercial cannabis activities to the DMX-1, DMX-2, MU, NC, RC, and ML zones, and amending municipal code Title IX, Chapter 4, Section 9, Slash 4D, Slash 3, to clarify that municipal and commercial cannabis activities and prohibited in community gardens. Right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Good evening. Steve Brandt, City Planner. I'm going to describe to you the ordinance that's before you and explain the land use portion and a little bit about the operations portion. And then I believe the city manager is going to also have some comments as part of the staff presentation. So this ordinance amends two sections of your municipal code. The zoning ordinance is being amended and also the business and operations portion. So in the zoning ordinance, we are currently, any commercial cannabis operation is not allowed anywhere in the city. So this amendment would make it allowed in certain zones within the city. So the state has defined certain types of cannabis businesses, and they're roughly defined as cannabis retailers or dispensaries, cannabis cultivation, cannabis manufacturing, cannabis testing, and cannabis distributors. So in the ordinance, what we are proposing is that a cannabis cultivation would be allowed in the light industrial zone and would be allowed with a conditional use permit in the neighborhood commercial zone. Cannabis commercial manufacturing and distribution and testing would be, would only be allowed in the light industrial zone. And a cannabis dispensary would be allowed in the DMX-1, DMX-2, mixed-use, neighborhood commercial, regional commercial, and light industrial zones. Now, so that is the zoning ordinance. What the zoning ordinance also says is for all of these uses, whether they need a conditional use permit or whether they're permitted, is that they also must comply with the Title IV section of your code. And Title IV is where the bulk of this new ordinance is. And it is describing how cannabis operations are supposed to operate. It also requires that any business obtain a development agreement from your council before they begin operation. So a development agreement is basically a contract between you, the city, and the developer. And in that development agreement, you can lay out the terms of how they are going to operate their business. You can lay out the terms of fees and taxes. You can also put on special conditions that maybe you may think are applicable based on the specific location or the way that they are proposing to operate. So the ordinance is very specific about safety and the types of safety measures that the businesses must put in place. And it gives you a lot of leeway to regulate these businesses so that they remain, so it keeps the community safe and promotes the safety and welfare of this community. So do you have any questions about the zoning portion of where the businesses might, would be able to go?
Can you brief me, where the zoning is?
Okay, I'll generally brief you. So DMX-1 and DMX-2 are downtown commercial zones. DMX-1 is your core downtown. DMX-2 is maybe the ring around the downtown. Mixed use, there are a few places around town that are zoned mixed use. Neighborhood commercial is going to be your commercial zones like the Saymart Center, other places like that. And then the industrial park is mostly light industrial. So it's mainly in commercial zones, because these are commercial businesses.
Thank you. Well, do you guys want to...
Do you have any zoning questions?
No questions?
Want to take it from here, Nathan?
None, unless council has specific questions.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. Anybody want to speak on this? Okay.
Dr. Gail Cruz, I'm sorry if I sound like RuPaul, but my allergies are getting to me. The question is, since we were talking about the city finances, how will having cannabis stores or areas where they can be sold or manufactured, how would it help the city as far as not just growth, but in the finances, since we're in the hole, we're pretty deep? How would that, what would that look like?
So we're kind of basing a dispensary, if we were to, this ordinance will allow for two dispensaries. We're kind of modeling after Woodlake. Their dispensary is bringing about a half a million dollars to the general fund, to the city of Woodlake. And that is just, I think that's a conservative estimate for Lemoore based on our location and how we placed to 198 and how we 41. But we also have interested parties in cultivation and manufacturing, and that could bring several million dollars a year at full buildout to the city's general fund. Those are all subject to development agreements. I do have some draft agreements that people have already started talking to the city about in anticipation that it opens. And this, I don't, cannabis is not our savior, end-all and be-all. Cannabis would be an opportunity to get our general fund healthy, get the city balanced, and make the proper investments we need to get other businesses into. Like a couple priorities for us are helping our downtown and then getting the intersection out at 41 and Bush. Out by the college, get that fixed and corrected so we can draw people in to bring businesses out there and get the growth going out to college that we need. You know, there's already lawsuits against cannabis, that it's how people are taxing it, and it's an illegal tax on the business. We're not passing a tax on it. We're doing a development agreement in which we will partner with those that want to come to town and reach an agreement with them. So even if a tax gets held up in court, it won't affect us. I don't think this is a 15, 20-year play. I think it's the next five to 10 years to help us get on our feet and make the right choices to get other industry in here to assist it. I hope that answered your question.
Sorry, I want to add to that also. Nathan, so when we went to Woodlake and we toured and saw that place, they said in 10 months they had created how many receipts? I can't remember what the number was.
They had 300 and something thousand. No, that's receipts out of the store. The numbers are anticipated about a half a million people foot traffic to the downtown.
So that's the other place that I was kind of going with it, not just the revenue that it's going to make. It's also going to bring a lot of people. Now, granted, sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes that's a bad thing. But you don't know until you have the problem. And I see people, so 300,000? So let's say that of those 300,000 receipts, half of them, there was two people. And I think that's being very conservative. So that's a half a million people walking downtown that wasn't there last year. And that's only in 10 months. That's one of the things that I like about having a dispensary. The main thing I like about it is the medical part of it. I don't know how many people have told me that they benefit from it. And that's kind of how I feel about it. And I just kind of wanted to answer your question. But the foot traffic is a big thing for me. I think that's going to help.
And additionally, when I, because I've talked to many people, right? I've been up and down the state, visiting and researching. We will truly, the reason we're doing this whole development agreement, just because we pass an ordinance doesn't make it a right. If you can check a box, you get to do business in Lemoore. That's not what we're looking for. We don't want cookie cutter, anybody can come open. Most people that start down this path never get the doors open because they, one, run out of funding, or they don't pass the state requirements. So we're very clear on that. And the foot traffic for downtown, that's a secondary benefit of a dispensary. But I'll be honest with you, and everybody initially has told me, you can put this dispensary out in the light industrial, the far south of town as you can get it, and the city's still going to get the same tax base. But you're not going to see your downtown flourish. You're not going to see empty buildings open up. So that's the benefit. You want to take something that can benefit the city, but then reap the rewards of it. Thank you.
This was an email that was sent in to City Manager Olson. I am writing to you to voice my opposition and concern for the recent green light to allow dispensaries within the city of Lemoore by the City Planning Commission. As a longtime resident since 1974, I have seen economic growth, recession, and downturn. Let me tell you, Lemoore is resilient. We are a small community with ethics and values. Lemoore's Chamber of Commerce has seen great success here recently, and I believe it is the positive creativity of staff. Anything is possible. As Amy Ward would say, teamwork makes the dream work. I realize that it has been increasingly difficult to find revenue sources, especially with department store closures and sales tax down recently. However, I sincerely believe that if we allow dispensaries, we would just be doing what is convenient to obtain easy money or dirty money. I am opposed to this for several reasons, such as the reasons Chief Smith outlined in the ordinance study session regarding the impact to Colorado when we were looking at our marijuana ordinances. The whole, if you can't beat them, join them mentality is a sellout. I am not ready to see our great community drug through the mud, and I never want to see the negative impacts to families. Also, the smell is horrendous. You want to lure new businesses to downtown Lemoore? Have it smell like skunk. Marijuana is still illegal federally, and it is a gateway drug. You will see more families torn apart, more homeless on the street, and our healthcare costs will rise tremendously. I implore you to think again, go back to the drawing board, and look for other sources of revenue. I know that you do not have a say in what council votes on, but you are a well-respected leader within our community, and your recommendation can make a difference. Your job has not been easy, and some of it has to do with a certain council member's behavior and the impact to businesses wanting to do business within Lemoore because of it. Success doesn't happen overnight, but it does happen with hard work and perseverance. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Angela Valenzuela, Lemoore resident.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
I'm kind of all over the map here, kind of making myself some notes, but I guess some of this stuff you can kind of blame my generation. I grew up in the 60s. I turned 13 in 63 and 19, in 1969. So I guess we were the hippie generation. But I can tell you one thing. I spent my entire life as a government employee, either in the military or for the fire department career, and I was drug tested all the time, and I still had a job because I didn't use it. In the fire service back in the early 70s, some of you may know and not know this, but there was a thing that hit, and I believe education's everything we do in this world. There was a thing that came along, it was a real short little word that scared people to death. And that was called AIDS. People were running wild, they were scared to death. We had firefighters that didn't want to go on calls, didn't want to go in the house because they said people have AIDS. But we found out that lack of our education, we didn't know how to deal with things. And I think this is what this is. It's lack of maybe someone's education on what this cannabis is really all about. Also in the fire service, we learned three E's. And I learned these three E's lasted anything in your life, no matter what you're doing. And that's called education, engineering, and enforcement. And that's how we dealt with business inspections. We'd go out there and educate the people why they need to do what they need to do in their business. And then we'd sit down with them and engineer a solution. And I think that's what we're doing here tonight. We're educating, and we're going to work on engineering a solution, how to do it. And I hear people that they're going to have homeless people camped out front of these businesses. Well, that's when the word enforcement comes in. And I don't think we could ask a better person enforcement than a police department we have here in Lemoore. And I think they will take care of that. I think some people maybe asking these questions to themselves haven't really got down and got all the answers yet. They just think people are going to be sitting out on the sidewalk smoking pot like at Woodstock in 1969. That's what I think some people view this as. Well, we have liquor stores in town, but I don't see people sitting outside getting drunk. Okay, those are decisions you make. But what I can tell you as a 40-year firefighter, there's nothing sadder than to go on a medical aid call to little teenage kids having seizures. And they have proven that marijuana for these kids stopped these seizures. And I'm telling you, if you've never seen one, it's the scariest thing in your life. And if it's your own kid, it's worse. We all know it's worse. I've watched a 13-year-old kid tell me, "I'm going to have it, it's coming." He's laying on the ground. And he starts to have a seizure, and they stiff enough you've never seen it. And I'm a pretty big boy here, and they lifted five of us off the ground. That's the strength these people have, okay? Not because he wants to, because that's the life he was dealt. But we have the capability here to treat those people. Another person that's really kind and close to my heart are the veterans. I'm also a retired veteran. And it's been proven it helps our veterans. And if it makes a veteran get up and walk in the morning, I'm all for it, okay? Because they've done stuff that a lot of people in this room won't do. They want to go war. I went to Vietnam, okay? I'm not proud of it, but I'm proud I served, okay? I realize that's why you send young people, okay? But those are big things. Also, I have some friends that live up in the Seattle and Ken area. They've been doing this for a long time. A lot of big donors in all those stories. They told me, matter of fact, and this one guy, I got to narrow the scope here because I don't want to give his name, but a very high-up position in the city up there. He says, "You'd be surprised what you find in these stories." Nothing against you, Mayor, but you'll find politicians in there. You'll find department heads in there. You'll find your neighbors in there. You never know. Because they're not all buying it just to smoke it. They're buying it for authoritis, they're buying it for a lot of things. So anyhow, the bottom line is, the city's hurting. Is it money? Sure. Is the city doing it because of the money? No, I don't think so. I think it's just timing is everything. And if we don't do it, I understand Hanford's already doing it. If I say he's doing it, because it's a big plant in Goshen, Kalinka's doing it. So all they're going to do is just drive through town and not stop here and need to go buy their stuff when they're leaving our own town. So anyhow, bottom line, I thank the enforcement. If you stay on top of it, I don't think it'll be a problem. But until we do it, how do we know? John F. Kennedy said we need to send a guy to the moon. How do we know it'd work? Send him to the moon.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anyone else?
Comrie 1060, Department of Lemoore. Many times when government presents something that they want to pass, we get all the benefits. And we've heard lots of positives here. But one thing that hasn't been addressed, when you talked about going to Woodlake and the positive, what their income was and all of that. What are their expenses? Have they had to increase any patrols? Have they had an increase in crime? Those are the things, we need to know those ahead of time also, not just what the revenue and other benefits are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Hi, my name is Shelley Reese, um, from 571 Tamarack. I didn't have any intentions on speaking tonight, but the only thing I have a, the thing with, I, I do agree with the medicinal purposes, I mean, I'm all for it. But I just feel like it's kind of messed up that, that now the cities and the counties are trying to make money off of something that everybody used to get locked up for. Look at all these people that's in jail and prisons behind, being locked up behind drugs. I'm sorry, marijuana is still a drug. It's always, they, they got arrested for it at one time, you know, one time or another. So, I just feel like there's still a lot of other areas that need to be fixed. And when I say that, when you guys talk about downtown, downtown, there's a lot of problems with downtown because of the buildings that need to be refurbished. The owners of those buildings don't want to pay for it. That's why they said they're vacant, because nobody wants to fix nothing. You can't bring businesses to these buildings that are half, you know, you know, I don't even know how to explain it. They're in bad, bad shape.
Falling apart.
Yes. And it's like, okay, you're right there on the main street. You should fix them. If you want to bring a business in there, you gotta fix the buildings, you know? And it would be like these homes that you guys go after for people who leave them abandoned and they, you know, they get all trashed. Okay? Well, what about these businesses that have been left vacant for years and years, that it just keeps going on and they just stay vacant? That's where all the income should be coming in, these businesses that should be in these buildings, drawing people to downtown so that people want to shop. Right now, half of them are empty, you know? I mean, yeah, they've brought in a few new ones in a couple of the areas, but down on that one end, those are still empty buildings. And I know personally, because I called about them, and there's, um, one of the owners said, you know, that needs a new roof, it needs all this and that, you know, can't pass code, you know, different ones that have issues with their coding, other owners on other streets right downtown, you can't do nothing with their businesses because the owners don't want to do nothing. So, it's like, okay, what about all of this stuff? Make these owners accountable. They own these businesses downtown. You know, why can't, they have to keep their buildings up to code so that they can keep businesses in them instead of vacant, just like these houses? That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. Anyone else?
My name's Michael Day, 25, Devon Drive. So as previously in the meeting this evening, we heard the, um, hard-to-hear report about uh, the city's finances. And yes, cannabis would contribute significantly to helping relieve that situation. Also, there is undisputed, uh, medical evidence suggesting that certain components in cannabis can be of medical benefit, such as CBD, which is a non-psychoactive component. THC, however, um, the actual psychoactive component, the, the chemical that gets people high, right? Is shown to be a cause of significant problems within individuals. Amongst that group is part of a group that would legally be able to be served by a dispensary, the age group of, um, 21 to 24. Um, in that age group, along with younger people, which obviously would not be legally able to, uh, purchase products from a dispensary, but that an increase in access from the community as a whole could also create access for younger individuals as well. Some of the negative side effects that are shown in numerous studies, um, issues of psychosis, schizophrenia, um, and greater substance use disorders. There's, the research is back and forth pertaining to marijuana being a gateway drug. Significant subjective studies have shown though that most people that have substance use disorders, um, with quote-unquote harder drugs, don't jump into those substances right off the bat, that they are introduced through means of, um, either alcohol or marijuana. The other confounding factor, because that alone in itself doesn't, doesn't, shows to not tend to contribute to that. The other confounding factor is socioeconomic disadvantage. According to the Census Bureau, um, the median income for Lamoore is roughly $55,000?
Yeah, 50, you're, you're close, give or take.
Which constitutes socioeconomic disadvantage for our community as a whole. That is the other confounding factor with the risk for substance use disorder, and also the other types of, uh, mental health conditions as well. Um, so, yes, it would be a huge increase for our city. It would definitely help out in monetary terms, um, but there are definitely some other negative side effects that need to be looked at as well, and, um, and those, those options weighed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Ron Mead, 1320 Cherry Lane, Lamoore. It's no secret how I feel about this because I'm on the planning commission, and you know how we voted for you to approve this type of thing. I love Lamoore, I've been here 23 years now. I realize that may be a newbie for a lot of people around here, but there is not a wall around this city that prohibits anything, whether it's alcohol, or tobacco, or marijuana, or heroin, or, or good vibes, or surf ranches. We can't keep that out. That's the reality of our world. Now hopefully, as parents and educators, we have instilled some values into our children and our family about making decisions. And when they're gone, we've done the best we can, whatever it may have been, and they're gonna make choices. Okay? Whether you like it or not, marijuana is legal in the state of California. And whether it's going to be coming from Hanford, or Woodlake, or Kalinga, or Vallejo, or wherever it is, if somebody wants it, they're going to get it. Whether it's recreational or medicinal. And I know about medicinal because I have family members who rely on that stuff, legally through medicinal purposes, does wonders for them. So if it's gonna happen, why not let it happen here under regulations from somebody like Merrill Smith? Development agreements, they're gonna try to protect as much as we can, knowing we can't protect all our children from everything. You heard earlier, the city has some financial straits, so if doing this can help improve the quality of life, and I use that word particularly, the quality of life for the citizenry of Lamoore, then you ought to give it serious consideration. You know, there, there is no free ride, no free ticket in this world. If there's a ying, there's a yang. Let's try and control it as much as we can to the benefit of everybody. And I think this could have a positive effect if we approach it that way. So, whatever decision you make is not gonna be popular with everybody, uh, but that's why you ran and we're elected. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anyone else in the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion for council?
I have a question for Mr. Olson. Can you currently in the city, limits of Lamoore purchase cannabis through delivery?
Not legally, through delivery. You can, so it can be delivered. The state allows delivery to your home, and they will come in, they, you have to show your ID, you do the transaction, and they leave. So you can legally obtain marijuana in the city limits of Lamoore.
Okay.
Right now, via the state mandate. So, we cannot stop it. We had to allow it once the state passed it. The state is also passing legislation right now that's going through, that they're gonna make it mandatory for all municipalities to open dispensaries to the tune of one per every four liquor license the city has. Now they cap that number with one for every 15,000, I believe, because we have a lot of liquor license in this town. So, our ordinance is one per 12,000. So if passed as written, we would allow two right now, and it would allow for growth once we hit 36,000. Um, I think it's gonna take us a while to get to 36,000 people, but, but yes, right now, we cannot prevent legal deliveries of marijuana into our town.
And back to that transaction, does the city see any tax revenue off of that?
No, we don't. The, the point of sale, whether it be Woodlake, Kalinga, or whoever's running the delivery, they get all the benefit of it.
Thank you.
So that was a yes and a no, right? I'm just making fun of the long answers tonight. Um, like, uh, Mr. Rogers over there, educate. When this whole thing first came up, I, I was, I was not for this. And by educating myself, like Ms. Rogers said, I've, I've opened my mind a lot more to it, that's for sure. Going to the Woodlake place, not only did the city send me there, and so they were expecting me, I kind of went there on my own before they were expecting me. I wanted to see if I was gonna get the same treatment both times, and I did. And I sat there for 30 minutes, and I watched that place, and I watched the people that walked in and out of it. I'm here to tell you, it was a little surprising for me. Everybody had their shirts tucked in and looked like, you know, good, normal Americans. And I was expecting like some people think. I was expecting a cloud of smoke, and blue hair, and sagging pants, and, you know, the whole nine. That's what I was expecting. That is not what I saw, not by afar. And after talking to those people going in, I, I've educated myself a lot. And I, I, I do say that there are some negatives with this. Resilience. What was her name, the letter you read?
Angela Valenzuela.
Part of our resilience is adapting. I see, I see this is some adapting right here, to fix a problem that is not foreseeable to be a long solution. This, this might be a phase, and I'm not saying to cash in while you can, but dang it, cash in while you can! I'm kidding. Um, so the four things with it, I see, I see, uh, the, the medical side of it. I see the fact that it creates foot traffic, I see the fact that it generates revenue, and then the one bad thing on it is the recreation. And I'm not even saying that it's necessarily bad, it's just, doesn't sit well with me, I guess. That's all I have to say. Oh, and besides the three Es, I like to kiss.
Keep it simple, Steve. There you go. I, I would like to address one of the comments if I can, um, from Mr. Reed. So, uh, Mr. Reed, we did reach out to Woodlake and Kalinga City Managers and Chief of Police there, and they have not seen an adverse effect in crime. Matter of fact, it's, there's been no increase. Um, we were, we, I, when I say we, I was with our Chief of Police, and we said, "All right, you've told us the good, what's the bad? What's the negative?" And, and they couldn't really give us a negative. And part of that is, we get to charge a regulatory fee to oversee licensing, make sure they're operating, background checks, things of that nature. And when we were building our regulatory fees, I was fully expecting to see two or three more patrol officers, you know, for crime stuff, and it just doesn't exist. We couldn't justify adding officers because we anticipate crime going up. So, trust me, and I've said this multiple times on the record, I've graduated two kids from Lamoore High. My daughter is gonna be a sophomore at Lamoore High, and my baby will be a seventh grader in the elementary school district. If I thought for one moment this was gonna have a negative influence on our community, I wouldn't even be up here presenting it. I really wouldn't. And I think it goes back to the point, as a parent, you raise your kids the best way you can, and they gotta make choices. You know, and part of this, when I first started down this road for cannabis, it was absolutely for the revenue. I'm not gonna lie to anybody here. I wanted to make a dime and try to help this budget, but the more I learned about it and the benefits of it, and with the state passing laws, that the train has left the station and it's here whether we like it or not, so we might as well embrace it and guide it the way we want it in our town versus being force-fed by the state and try to catch up to it. So that's kind of where I, where I stand. But I appreciate everybody's comments this evening, and, um, we're trying to be as transparent as we can. If you have any questions and want to go deeper, I'm always available, and I can even get you in touch with people in the industry if there's questions that, um, I cannot answer for you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say, uh, far as commercial, uh, far as for sicknesses and stuff, it, it really does. Uh, it's been on CNN, it's been on Fox, and, I mean, it's, it's here. And I look at, far as I have a niece, um, I don't think my brother would mind me saying this, she was having like 50 seizures every two months. And, um, now, they have a liquid gel cap, um, that she takes, and she had one seizure in six months. So, that's their testimony, and, uh, anything to help, I'm for it. So, I wanna see if you guys want to get a motion. On 4-2?
I'll make a motion to approve 4-2. Let's get it to the second reading.
I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley.
Second.
And I got a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries? Okay, going down to new businesses, section five. 5-1, report and recommendations, approve, approval of administrative assistant to fire prevention inspector in the public works inspector position, resolution 2019 slash 20. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll try to keep this brief. Okay? So, this evening during the budget, we discussed two positions. The combination of the assistant, uh, I'm sorry, the admin assistant to, uh, fire prevention inspector, um, as well as the addition of a public works inspector. Neither of those two job descriptions currently exist its classifications in the city, and so in order to do the reclassification and then recruit for the public works inspector, we need council's approval to adopt the job descriptions that are before you this evening, as well as establishing the salary range. Both of them will be the same salary range and consistent with the other building inspectors within the city. Um, and this, the way this resolution is drafted in the staff report is that those positions would become available July 1. Oh, there is no financial impact because the salary for these two people are already included in fiscal year 20 budget, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public. No comments from the public? Going back to the council?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2019 dash 2-0.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries?
Thank you.
5-2, report and recommendations, intention of levy and collect the annual assessments with, within landscape and lighting maintenance district number one, LLMD, zone 1 through 13, resolution 2019 slash 21, in the public maintenance facility maintenance district number one, PFMD, zone 1 through 9, resolutions 2019 slash 2022. I see Rivera, but...
Yeah, I'm not frank. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. Amanda Champion, management analyst, I will be presenting this evening. Uh, I will as well try to keep this short and simple. It's just a pretty standard item. Every year, council, uh, has to adopt assessments for LLMDs and PFMDs in the city of Lamoore. Well done, we have a consultant who prepares these reports, you have them attached with you this evening, and that propose the annual assessments. So this year, the city is proposing, um, for the LLMDs, two of these zones will increase, but they will still remain within their maximum assessment. Two zones will decrease, and the remaining eight zones will stay the same with last year's assessments. For the PFMDs, three zones will increase, six zones will decrease, and they do have sufficient fund balances, uh, to sustain their annual operating expenses, along with some capital improvement projects for those zones, uh, for the nine zone, the total zones. So, with all that being said, staff is recommending council adopt the resolutions for the LLMDs and PFMDs, uh, for the annual assessments. Any questions?
No questions? I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public. Anybody from the public want to expound on this? I see there's none.
You got one, I think.
Oh, there he is.
I'm sorry, I didn't, now, question I...
I'm sorry, didn't, now, a question I have, about a year and a half when I first started attending these council meetings. By the way, I've only missed two because of my grandkids, but that's okay. There was a lot of talk about this, you guys all remember this. We had a meeting in here because people were just going ballistic because you're gonna raise their landscape fifty cents a year. They just, they were panicking. I guess to educate me and maybe other people in this room, why does some landscape districts in this town, they can raise the rates, and other ones that can't without a vote of the people? Because last time, I remember we were counting ballots over here and stuff. So, why, why does the city allow that you can just raise my rates all you want, but yet, if I live across the street, I have to vote? And the vote last time was like, woo, you know? So, I, I'm just, as taxpayer and a resident, I just, I wanna know, I need to find out my district and see if I'm one of those districts where you just keep taking money.
Okay, so, I'll take, I'll field this, this one, but, so basically, when the districts are established, you have a, a maximum, there's a maximum cap put on the district. So let's say, for instance, the maximum is a hundred dollars a year contribution on your tax roll. Well, when, when they do the assessment and say it only costs sixty dollars a year, we can only assess for cost of service provided. Okay, so then what happens is, is, as expenses go up, your max is already set for a hundred. As long as we're within the, as long as we're within the engineer's report, we can bump that up incrementally to cover the cost. Once the engineer's report hits that maximum, then you have to go out and get a two eighteen hearing in a bid. Now, in all honesty, when these were set up in the very beginning, they should've had an annual inflator, not to exceed three percent or whatever the, is it API or the index is? And they didn't have inflators. Now, if you look at our PFMDs and the areas of town that are very well maintained, those were set up with inflators from the get-go. So, you're right, it's hard to, we did go for increases on multiple zones because we have a lot of zones running in negative, negative spends, so we, they kinda go bad, but that, that's how it works. So every year, we have to get an engineer's estimate, and we can only charge for cost of service. And once a zone is maxed out, we cannot just charge them above and beyond that. It has to go to a two eighteen hearing.
Let me see if I can clarify my, my question a bit better. Half a District B, from what I understand, where Mr. Brown lives, on that area from Liberty over to Eighteenth and Hanford, Ammon Road, and Cinnamon, they're in a district where they said no for more money. And so they'll say, from what I understand, I live across the street of Liberty by the junior high school, and I don't have say, you just raise it. So what I'm asking is, why do we have a city that has every neighborhood different? Why aren't they all the same?
Well, because the, the zones were, were built at different times. And the zone that Mr. Brown lives in, that Zone One, that is our, that is our biggest underfunded zone in the city, and it's also our largest zone in the city. So that's why you see the brown landscape along the main arterial roads, because there's just no money to maintain it. Unless...
Early Lemoore.
Yes, now, where you live, that's actually, I believe it's, you live on the west side of Liberty?
Yes.
So that's a PFMD, you're paying more, you're road resurfacing, and everything's included in your, in your assessment.
I pay for everything, yeah.
Yes, you do.
I pay for the leaves that fall off the tree.
Yep. So, but that's kinda thing, so, since, since I've come to the city, when we can, we try, as new developments come in, we try to put them in PFMDs.
Right.
Um, just because it's, it's a fair assessment, and these are legal ways that cities can help offset the costs of maintenance for, for subdivisions. Um, earlier, you know, you can go LLMD or PFMD. The PFMDs are preferred for, for me and the direction I give staff is let's do PFMDs as well as we can. But in instances where we piggyback onto an existing LLMD where they have a lot of shared landscape, you're better off just keeping it in LLMD.
Right.
But, um, I'll say though, I think part of the, part of the issue we face now is they weren't properly set up with annual inflators to stop, to prevent this ramp. So now every time we gotta go and vote for a tax increase, it's very hard to do, yet, you know, people don't wanna vote an increase. So, it's, it's a struggle, and we will go out again probably next year to try to raise some funds. And I think we just need to do a better job getting the word out, getting the education out. And, um, you know, the city needs to, to step up and make it clear why we're going after what we're going after, so people just don't think we're just trying to get extra money for lackluster service, because that's not the case.
Okay, since we don't have the three-minute meter, I guess one more question. I guess I still don't fully understand, I'll, I'll say half of that district, thirty years from now, they can still be paying almost nothing for landscape, but I'm paying thousands of dollars a year, is what you're telling me. Because those people are always gonna tell you no.
So, yes.
Take more money, nobody does that.
Yeah, so I don't know if, I don't know if you're thousands here, but yes, whatever your ma- whatever your assessment is, if you're in a PFMD, you normally have a small inflator, so it'll, it'll go up, it can go up two percent, as long as the engineer's report supports the increase. We can't just arbitrarily raise it because we want to. It has, cost of goods have to go up, cost of labor, whatever, you know, we have to provide the service. But you are correct, if an, if a zone that's maxed out never votes for an increase, it'll just get worse and worse unless the city steps in and throws funds towards it out of the general fund. And right now, we don't have the general fund to, to help subsidize and support.
So basically, I'll end with a simple comment, welcome to California, I'm gonna pay for somebody else's stuff.
That's not exactly accurate. So, you're paying for your area where you live and the public benefit and the home value in your neighborhood. We cannot take your money and spend over there.
Taking it out of general fund?
Well, but we don't, but we don't, right? We don't, and anytime we'd wanna spend general fund monies, we've done that once since I've been here, and that was when we did the, um, east side sidewalk interior removal on Fox Street. Um, that was to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars. That did come out of the general fund. That's a main artery, main travel road for our residents, so that was the main driver on that one. If I had the money, I would've done the west side, but I just didn't have the money to do the west side.
Anyone else? Any more public comments? I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Make a motion to approve the engineer's report and adoption of resolutions twenty nineteen dash twenty-one and twenty-two, establishing assessments for FY twenty twenty.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billensley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, going down to five dash three. Report and recommendations, Kings County Grand Jury report regarding Lemoore City Council members conduct at city council meetings. Motion?
So I am gonna pass this one off to our city attorney, Ms. Janelle.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. There are copies of the report up here, council has copies as well. I should say, not the report, the, well, there are copies of the report and the draft response. Council, it's your pleasure, this was given to you this evening along with the public. So, do you want me just to read the letter, is, or would you like me to summarize it, your, your...
Summarize?
Yeah, summarize, please.
Okay, so, the grand jury report basically has four findings. The first finding, uh, is that, um, relates to the rules of procedure, um, and that the city council, uh, the grand jury fills the city council doesn't have members that haven't discussed the rules of procedure, um, did not attend when those meetings were discussed, and, um, uh, that they recommend that that happens and that trainings be provided, and that the council, uh, avail themselves of those trainings. Uh, the city's response basically goes through, um, and says that they disagree with the findings of one. They ha- the city has provided trainings on a regular basis to the council. It lists the number of trainings and the le- uh, leak trainings that the individual council members have attended, along with the, uh, trainings provided by the city attorney. The reason the packet is so big is those presentations are also attached as an exhibit. Um, it further outlines the process for the adoption of the rules, um, when those rules were adopted, and at which meetings, and the members that were present and voted at those meetings. And, uh, those minutes are also attached as an exhibit. It rec- it recognizes that the, uh, grand jury's recommendation regarding training, that the city will continue to provide training as it has. Um, however, sometimes training is costly in the, with the fin- and may not be financially available. Um, but will, at, the city will continue to do, uh, the trainings as required by the law, um, and as available. The second finding relates to the mayor and his inexperience as the mayor, um, and it, and, and his inability to control the meeting or the council. Uh, the recommendation is that he receive additional trainings. The city's response basically disagrees with the findings. Identifies that the mayor has been a city council member since December of two thousand twelve, has seen a lot of changes, and that the current situation with the city council has faced in the recent, um, recently is both unique and unusual. Um, and that it's really the mayor's responsible for implementing the parliamentary procedures. Um, those jobs and duties, he's attempted to do so in a fairly legal and judicious process. And that, um, oftentimes, it's hard to predict what's gonna happen. And that, uh, he is, has used the legally me- the means that are legally available to him, um, calling recesses, asking members to get back on topic, or admonishing the speaker. The council rules of procedure further identifies that the city council as a whole is responsible for taking action against council members who do not follow the rules, um, which the city council has attempted to do, um, as a body, and, um, refers back to the finding, the information regarding the trainings. The third finding basically relates to the city attorney and expresses the, uh, states that she, that they expressed an opinion regarding the rules of procedure or responsibility of the city council, and that, uh, the lack of leadership and hands-off experience basically contributes to the void of leadership in the city. Uh, the response, again, disagrees with the findings. Um, indicates that they, explains the roles of the city council, the city attorney and the city manager. Basically outlines the, uh, rules of ethics that are required to be followed by the city attorney's office. And that the city attorney is the legal advisor to the council, um, is prohibited by law from ma- being a policymaker. Um, and that, so while it may appear sometimes that the city attorney's actions or inactions are hands-off, it's often, there's a number of factors that go into those. The decisions on how the city attorney responds and interacts with the, both the council and the public. And oftentimes, um, the city attorney is prohibited from making statements or taking actions that would exceed authority, disclose privileged information, or create a liability for the city. The fourth finding basically, um, asks for additional, that notes that the city council's rules allow for additional remedies, and recommends that the council, um, have a copy of the rules and that they enforce those rules. Uh, again, response is the city disagrees with the finding in number four, that the, um, city council has provided trainings as outlined in item number one, in response to number one, and that the enforcement of violation of the rules, um, can be done by the city council, that, in particular, the council recently, um, has done a number of different things to control the situation, including, um, admonishing member, uh, members of the council, uh, censure, doing a public censure, um, sending a cease and desist letter from the city attorney. Ultimately, the city has recently filed a lawsuit, um, which was ultimately settled in a manner that seems to, at least at to date, has corrected the conduct. The city council, the city and staff, uh, believe they've addressed the issues that have arisen as they've come up, and will continue to do so in a professional, legal, and fair manner. It is currently, uh, to be signed by the mayor, but I know the staff report says the city manager, so it's up to the council on who they would wish to have that signed by. And it is a draft for, which can be changed.
Any of you guys wanna talk about this, or? Did you say?
Send it to the public.
I'm gonna go ahead and send it to the public. Tom Reed, ten sixty-five, Lemoore, Mayor and council members. Mayor Neal, the problems stated by the grand jury report did not begin with you. They began two years before you became mayor, and we all know why they started. Matthew five nine says, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Mayor Neal, I truly believe you are a peacemaker. I believe you don't want to offend anyone or to embarrass anyone. I also believe that you are a great ambassador for the city of Lemoore, but sometimes, I believe that you are too nice for some of the responsibilities that you have. I leave you with this, Isaiah forty-one thirteen. For I, the Lord thy God, will hold thy right hand, saying unto thee, fear not, I will help you. Having said that, I would like to ask a question. Uh, this, in the settlement of the, uh, lawsuit with the council member, uh, there was an agreement. Does the actions by that council member violate that agreement? The viol- the actions that that council member took before the arrest? Which one? Which? Which time? I don't mean to say that, God!
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the day of her arrest.
Okay.
And the actions that she took immediately preceding that arrest. Does those actions violate the agreement that she had with the city for settlement of that lawsuit?
City attorney?
Do you want, council, would you like me to respond?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Uh, the settlement agreement specific- specifically relates to her, um, speech. So she is prohibited from making com- I believe quoting, from memory, she is prohibited from making comments regarding city employees.
So, so the answer is no to my question?
The answer is no to your question.
That's, that's fine. And in one comment that you made, that, uh, some of the issues had been resolved in the council meetings. Uh, well, we all know why those issues have been resolved at council meetings, because that council member has not been attending council meetings. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I have a question to echo some of his thoughts, and maybe, maybe it did, I just didn't understand it. Is the city still on the tab for her attorneys at this current time of, when she goes to court? Is the city paying the bill, we're gonna roll another hundred thousand?
It, council, would you like me to address this?
Yeah.
Cause I gotta get my landscape done now, so...
The city, the city, the, as, as reported previously, the city agreed to pay fees in that lawsuit only. The city is not pa- currently paying fees for anything else.
Got one good thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anyone else? Bringing it back to the council? Wanna get a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the recommendation as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Billensley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billensley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, city council report and request, city council report and request, Mr. Brown?
Uh, just like to say, uh, thank you for everybody being here, wanna thank the staff, city manager and staff. You guys have been, been working hard. Uh, appreciate it, appreciate the PD, all you guys do, all your officers. And, uh, I know it sounded like a broken record, the Lemoore Fire Department, volunteer fire department. It takes, it takes a, you know, takes a team, and I think we have a good team here. You know, um, just wanna say thank you, I have nothing really to report out. Uh, from the last time, there is a, uh, groundwater sustainment management, uh, agency meeting this Thursday at five thirty over here in the council chambers, this Thursday. So, uh, if you're bored, I mean, if you, you want something, come on over, it's real interesting. But no, come on over.
Dave on the board.
It, it's important stuff, you know, it's about, uh, you know, uh, subsidence of, uh, you know, uh, uh, ver- of our grounds and, and, uh, aquifers and stuff like that. But, uh, no, it's interesting stuff, I geek out on it, so, anyway, that's about it, thank you.
Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the police department, too. I'd, I hear things, and I know they do their job, and they do it well. And I appreciate you guys a lot, and the fire department, the rest of my buddies, I guess you could say. Um, I have aging tomorrow. I have aging tomorrow, the aging commission, aging, and also, no, that's, I'm sorry, KCIO is tomorrow, and aging is on Thursday, but I'm going to be out of town because I'm going to be at the, the League of Cities, so. I think that's where I'm going to stop, right there.
Well, I don't necessarily have a report about any boards and commissions, but I, I do like to think that there's a lot of people in this room that are looking for comment tonight, and that there's no doubt in my mind that everybody up here has Ms. Blair's family and herself and their thoughts and prayers. So I just want to say that first. Secondly, you're welcome. I've recently received an offer in Colorado, so July 16th will be my last meeting. It's a great opportunity for me and my family and for personal growth. Lemoore will always be my hometown. I'll do whatever I can to fill the vacancy and do whatever I can to help. And I really do appreciate all your guys' support over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billingsley.
Thank you.
Okay. I got a letter from the Naval Air Station Change of Command Ceremony and Retirement Ceremony. It will be at the Base Theater Building, 822 Naval Air Station. I would like the council as, okay, I'm sorry. I would like the council, as well as the city manager, to go to that, if they can, to support our military or Naval Air Station base. Let me say it again, you can, we're having, they're having a ceremony on base, the Naval Air Station. It's going to be change of command. And I would like to see our city council members, if they can, go to that to support the. The date would be on Friday, the 19th of July. It will start at 9 o'clock in the morning. So if you guys, any of you guys want to go, just let me know. Support the Naval Air Station. They've really been good to the city of Lemoore. Yes, I went to the League of Cities. They had their meeting at Hanford. It was, our general meeting was in Hanford, and it was a great meeting. They talked about, I think it was Prop 68, if I'm saying that right, about the park funding. Yeah, and so free funding, if we want to get another park here, since that park is turning to veterans park, if we want to see another Lemoore park here, we, see if you can do something about that, Mr. Gleck. Just want to let you guys know about that. It was a great meeting. And we're going to also, we need some designate voting delegates of the League of California Leagues. It's going to be October 16th through the 18th in Long Beach. So if any of you guys want to go to that, see if we can get, okay, Mr. Brown?
Somebody else doesn't want to go?
And I got, I'm on the board, so.
Counsel, excuse me, you, you guys can talk about it, but you need to agendize it, basically.
Oh, okay.
Staff will be bringing that back, so I just received the, in the mail today, so I gave it to the city clerk.
Let me give you. And then we got Sarah A. Mooney Museum, 542 West D Street, downtown Lemoore. I am pleased to announce that those panels have been completed and they will be already installed, insulated. We have scheduled a dedication, we have, we have scheduled a dedication, let me read this again. We have scheduled a dedication ceremony for 142 West D Street on the east side facing the Tropicana Market at 7:00 PM on Thursday. They're going to be doing a dedication to Sarah A. Mooney Museum. I would like to see, invite everyone to be at that ceremony. I think it's going to be a good addition, you know, it's showing that we're putting a face on Lemoore. It's going to beautify our city, so. I'm sorry, I'm holding you guys up.
It's okay.
I talked about Prop 68. Okay, this is the one that got me. I attended the KCOE, which is Kings County Office of Ed, mock interview with foster kids. And, um, we interviewed, we interviewed them, acting like they were going to get a job, getting them prepared for life outside of being in foster care, they're getting ready to see the real world. And so they had Kings EDC, different other Kings County, and they were, what we were doing is seeing how they were going to do in their interview. And so they were scared when they came in. You could see something like, but then you seen the energy that came out these kids, and it, my wife, she got emotional after, we had to meet the whole class afterwards, and she broke out in tears. It was an emotional thing, because you see these kids, they strive, they reach boundaries because they've been through situations that we can't imagine, we can't, we can't fathom in our mind. And it was just a good thing to go see them and support them. That's about it. I'm going to get, I'm going to pass it on to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, for the do-over. I forgot in, earlier in the night, I've received a couple concerns or complaints from citizens regarding our Facebook Live broadcast, and not so much of the live broadcast, but some of the comments that are being posted during the live feed. And the concern is that it reflects badly on the city, because not everybody's keeping the comments. They're saying derogatory things, some individuals, not a lot, but some. So I was wondering if we wanted to maybe rethink and potentially videotape our meetings, but don't post them live and then post the live feed to our website the following day like we do with the audio. So just looking for consensus on that.
I'm okay with that. Most municipalities I know of, Klinga and others, they, that's what they do. As long as we get it out there for the people to see, which is good, it's from being transparent, I'm okay.
Yeah, I, I agree.
It's two.
I agree.
Okay, there's three. Okay, and then, secondly, this one came up with, with the council member Billingsley. He said that he'll be leaving us. I would like to get consensus to hold a meeting on 7/2, a regularly scheduled meeting that was canceled previously in the year due to 4th of July, so staff can bring forth a resolution for how to fill the vacancies, the vacancy. Be a one-item meeting.
Council, just for parliamentary procedures and procedures, you'll probably, because a resolution was adopted to cancel the July meeting, I will figure, I'll work with staff to figure out how to do a resolution before you have your meeting so that you can do it properly.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should be able to have a meeting.
You could have a special meeting, adopt the resolution, and then you could have a regular meeting on the second.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I'd just like to, to thank council tonight and our, our residents for their input. Could have been a pretty rough meeting tonight, but, uh, thank you for, I, I don't feel beat up on. I, I feel like you guys are trusting staff and our recommendations, and that goes a long way. I appreciate it, really do. Thank you.
Can I say something real quick? I know I'm out of, but, uh, didn't know about Chad. Just want to say thank you for your hard work. I know you're still going to be here another couple of meetings, but you've done a dang good job.
Appreciate it, Dave.
And, and, no, you've done great. You've done a good job. Sorry to see you leaving, but, you know, that's the way life is sometimes. We got to move forward and, you know, but, no, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You'll love the cold weather.
Snow out there, right?
Yep.
I should get him a snow shovel.
Tornadoes.
They got, well, snow shoveling there.
I'm going to, I'm just going to say I'm going to miss you, too. I, I was telling you about the tornadoes that they have out there.
Changes mine.
Okay, time is 9:15, or 9:13.